Well, welcome everybody here. We will call this meeting to order. We'll have a roll call.
Appleby?
Here.
Runner?
Here.
Edwards?
Here.
Gunderson?
Here.
Najowski?
Here.
Rasmussen?
Here.
All six are present.
Okay, just to let everybody know that this meeting and all meetings of this council are open to the public. Proper notice has been posted and given to the press in accordance with Wisconsin statutes, so the citizenry may be aware of the time and place in the agenda of this meeting. I will ask everyone to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance led by Shaney Herr. For Appleby?
(laughing). I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. It hasn't been in the right rotation, too. Do we look for a motion then to approve the agenda?
I will make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second it.
Any questions or comments on the agenda?
Just a couple of quick ones on the advice of the city attorney. There's two resolutions on the TIF district, TIDS, closing number three, establishing number six. There's a word we're waiting on from the Department of Revenue to make sure that that order is correct, that you do it on the same night and in that order yet. And Attorney Kalney about half an hour ago got to me and said, "You might want to just pull that off because, just to be safe." We could still take it up next week, week after that, we're still good yet, but if you want to just pull those two off, I believe one is under plant commission, one's under new business. And, okay, take those off if you could, that'd be great.
Okay. Do you like to make a motion then to pull them off? Would that?
Maybe just amend your-
Or amend your motion?
Yeah, I will amend my motion to remove eight E from the agenda for now, and also G1.
G1, there you go. Thank you. I'll second that.
Okay. Any other questions or comments on that? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Then we will move on to, and look for a motion to approve the minutes from our regular council meeting on December 15th and a special council meeting on January 5th, 2015.
And just a quick note, the January 5th are not in your packet, so it's just December 15th, so I apologize on that one. We'll take those up at your next meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the regular common council meeting on December 15th.
I'll second it.
Okay. Any comments, questions, or additions to that, the minutes? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. We'll move on to citizens' appearance. We will start with Mr. Zavoy, library rep.
Thank you. First of all, I apologize, we're going to have to leave after my speech here. We did find out tonight that there will be two presentations here. My, I believe it is a single person that will do that. The one is a Mark Twain, 100 years later, that will be on Sunday in the afternoon from 3:00 until 4:30 down here. The second one will be on Monday, it's the same person, and that's why we're having them back-to-back, that will be from 6:30 to 8:30, and again, that will be down here. In the meantime, we are trying to get rid of these books, and I know I've promised that to you now several times. We're running into dead ends because everybody suggests call here, call there, we called there, and, well, we would love to, but, or if you can do this. So, right now, the way we have it set up, we have two inquiries. If the first one does not work out, the second one is that the Honor Society will work through volunteerism. I'll bring my truck to load it up, and we're hauling it into Appleton, to the Appleton Library. They have space, and apparently they're welcome to take the books, so here's hoping on that one. And then Patrick and I have talked a little bit in terms of the, do you want me to discuss that?
Sure, yep.
In terms of the ownership and/or the who has what responsibility with the library, and our committee or our group is going to meet at a couple of meetings so that we can get it put together and we can actually go with what there is. There apparently was some question that there is a state statute or not, and if you don't have a copy, I'll make sure you have a copy of that.
Yeah.
But then we'll meet with you, and the other thing was that possibly, if necessary, that the library board meet with a representation from the city council and with Patrick and myself, and we then discuss who's responsible for what, who's doing what. I have two bids in right now for the furnaces. I'm getting a little bit concerned because there's a major difference in the bidding in the sense that one says that our flue system is going to work, and the other one says, "Uh-uh, your flue system isn't going to work, it has to be PVC pipe straight out, it cannot go through and up through the roof because you have too many curvatures and what have you in there." So I have a third person coming in, hopefully this Thursday at 8:00, and we will, depending on which way that third person goes from there. But as I'm looking out, I already saw one of you shaking your head, "Yep, it isn't going to go through there." So, I am leaning in that direction right now, that we're going to have to have some excavation someplace in order to put that in for the connection. But the two furnaces, we want to get on somebody's list so that as the weather turns nice, we can actually have them taken care of. They are not at the point of totally going out, but as I look in that room, I get more concerned each time I go in there. They're rusting out, they're showing their wear and tear, and I don't want to end up being here with a phone call that, "Oops, the furnace is shut down." So, we will be looking at it to replace those. Any questions?
I'll throw something on to clarify real quick. In working with Frank, he talks a little bit about the furnace or that heating system. One of the questions I had was on ownership of this building. And, you know, by state statute, you have a library board that's set up to do certain things, and as you guys know, you have a section in your budget where you contribute a certain amount of money, and then the library board gets to spend that money. But the question I had was, over the years, the city pays to ensure the building, I don't know that we charge all of our insurance on workers' comp and those types of things to the library, so the question was, if it's time to replace a furnace, who's supposed to pay, who owns the building? Nothing's really written down, and the problem with not writing things down is after a while you get new people that come in, maybe don't know how things have gone in the past, so...
And that's exactly how the library board felt also, that it's time to put this in writing, so we know, you know, and everybody knows.
And we all save a headache, and nobody's upset, and there you go.
Yep. Any other questions? If not, thank you. I apologize, but I am going to leave.
Thanks Frank.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we'll move on to citizens' appearance B. Mark Bayman, Fire and Ice rep.
Hey. I'm here and a member of the Fire and Ice. Every year, we ask you guys for aid assistance and support to our event. For past seven years, you guys have given us a lump sum of money to help us offset the costs that we incurred throughout the course of our event. Through donations, it's allowed us to help multiple groups, youth groups and organizations that can't individually make their own money, so they can come up by themselves and create money towards their own groups, so it's been a great thing. With your help, and since 2007, Fire and Ice has raised for 29 different organizations, all of which are youth-oriented. If you don't know how this works, any volunteer can come in, they get signed up, they get put on the program, all their hours gets dictated to whoever, whatever orient, excuse me, whatever group they want to dictate their hours to. At the end, when we compile all the hours and the money that we profit off of, we disperse it out to the different groups for the amount, all the time they put into the organization. Since then, through all donations, sponsorship, the money received, raised, we've given back $69,783 to these groups and organizations, basically $10,000 a year since we've started this. It's been a great thing for us and a thing for our community. This event is becoming extremely large, so you've noticed that, requires a large amount of volunteers and donations. For example, this year, we're running two weekends rather than just one weekend. Also, the money has been hard to come by. Obviously, the economy dropping, donations been hard to get, obviously, you guys go through the same thing in here, people come ask for money, and it's a hard thing to deal with. So, once again, we're asking for your help. And it's supposed to be wondering why your sponsorship from you guys would be worthwhile, and that is just the fact that during this time of year, it's February, there's not a lot going on in Wauwaha, there's not a lot of extra income coming in, and if you notice that weekend, there's a lot of people in town. The gas stations are loaded constantly, some of the bars and eating establishments have a lot more people in there than they normally have, so it's an extra income for them coming in throughout the city. So it just seems to be a really, really big thing that's happening. Also, you can't, I can't give you the exact dollars to what it brings in, but like I said, if you get out there and look, you'll see how much more, how many more people there are in the area. There's at least, in our big championship race, there's at least 1,200 people sitting in our grandstands during this race, that's not people we would normally have around here. So that is obviously getting some money coming in. So like I said, at this point, on behalf of Fire and Ice, I would just like to say thank you for everything you guys have done for us at this point, I really appreciate it if you guys could help us out again with your donation. Last two years, I believe, it's been about $700 for your donation that you've given us. That is basically, what that helps us with is the cost of the water and stuff like that when we put on a track and create the track, so, like I said, we really appreciate it, like I said, we're hoping that you can get your donation again. That's it.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Anybody have any questions?
So we have, yeah, do you want to talk about tonight, or...
Or pass it on to...
Wouldn't it go to finance?
Finance.
Yeah. Yeah. If you'd want to refer-
I was just trying to see if somebody had a question about it before you took it to a council meeting, or to a committee meeting, okay? We will-
I have one more thing. I have a copy of this and some of the current elements of support. Do you guys want a copy of this for your notes or anything?
Sure. Yeah, we can take it, if you have an extra copy, yeah.
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 Thank you.
I will move that then to the finance committee.
Sure.
Okay. That'll go to finance, Mark, if you want to come back for the finance meeting, but you're welcome to. Okay. Any other citizens' appearances?
Nick.
Let's see, Nick?
Actum Meyer?
Actum Meyer? Do you have anything you want to say to you right now?
No, I'm just here for the trash.
Okay, so you had, it's just that you had yesterday, and I just thought maybe you had something. Don O-
Yeah, just to clarify what you probably want to do, so we have the podium up, and if you want to speak about garbage and recycling, this would be the time for the public to speak. And when the council takes it up, they may not open it back up for comment, though, so if you have something you wanted to say, this would be the time, then.
I'll just go down the list, and if you want to speak, we ask that you give your name and address. Don Ostrander?
110 West Parker Street, Don Ostrander. On the garbage outfit, what I've reading in the papers and all this stuff here on, between, what is it, Harders and Gration? My concerns is, is Harders the company is going to push you a one barrel out there in the long, the iron, pick one barrel up and dump it, and that's all the garbage service you're going to get? Or are they going to do as Gration has done over the 20 years they've been here, and you're going to have a mountain out there and they're going to take it? If that's the case, I think if you let Gration go at this time, you're doing this city residence a very big bad injustice, because you're going to have people paying $10 a load and running up to the recycle center and all that stuff there. If you're going to be limited to one barrel of the iron, picks up and dumps, and that's all you're going to get. Just wanted to put my comments in. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Jack Scream?
309 East Wisconsin. I got the same issue Don has. This whole garbage thing, forgive the pun, but it sounds like garbage to me. I mean, it was voted on last time I was here, and for some reason, got changed. According to the paper, it was going to be on one Monday night, and apparently it had a meeting on Monday in between there, very few people knew about it, and then if somebody changed their vote, which I am very concerned about, because why did that happen? There was not a Public Works meeting in between, so to me, it looks very fishy that somebody would change their vote just overnight, wake up and say, "Hey, maybe I did something wrong here, I'll change my mind." This council is supposed to be honorable, and when you vote on something, it should stick, and not, it'd come back later and say, "Well, I want to change my mind, can we try it again? It sounds like I didn't get my way, so let's do it over again." I agree with Don, past 20 years here, it's pretty tough to beat Gration sanitation, they do an excellent job. I know from when I was on the county, or on the council, excuse me, they went five-plus years and never raised the rent, they raised the charges, never had fuel charges. I think it'd be a disgrace to the city to even think about changing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Fred Gates, got a question, Mark?
Yeah, so I'm about to stay and repeat what they said. Down in December meeting, like, said it was a 3-3, and the mayor broke the tie, if you break the tie, that we shouldn't even be arguing about this now. But like Gration, they've been here for 20-some years, like they said, and he does, he's a businessman in town, he does a lot, like for Fair, with the Fair years, and he's been helping the Fair out tremendously for years, and like Jack says, I think you'd be doing a city disgraced by not staying with Gration.
Thank you. Take the mark for that.
Mark is on.
Jerry's going to disclose report.
What is that, negative? No. No.
Okay.
Nick.
Lynn Gration, did you have anything you wanted to say?
I just wanted to leave my options open, so I could say some, but Patrick says, "I'm pretty much, right now is my time." I guess what I'd had to say was just probably, I appreciate what has been said behind me with people in Wauwaha. We've had 20 years, we have been very frugal with the raises, and I guess I wondered how much my hard work meant, but when I see this tonight, I might really appreciate it that people come out and do feel, you feel better even whatever happens in the outcome here, but I do appreciate that, so that's my sentiment. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you. Frank Zavoy said yes, and that's it. Anybody else that I missed?
If I could just say something, too. He was first on the list, certainly. As the one gentleman behind me here has said, as far as putting out a can of that, the bids were put in, as far as we're going to service the community the same way Gration does. As a matter of fact, we put out, you could put a quantity up to three yards of trash out there, which is more than what you're currently doing, so...
Okay. Okay. Any more citizens?
Sure.
Any more citizens' appearances? We will move on to number six, veto session from January 15th, special city council meeting. Motion to enter into a contract with Harders Fox Valley for two years with city options for a third year, approved on a 4-2 vote by the council on January 5th, 2015, and vetoed by the mayor on 011015. I guess I'm, I vetoed it because of the fact that I went back and spent several hours looking at all of our committee meetings, our regular meetings. From the start, it looked to me like, and listening to your comments at your committee meetings and listening to the regular meetings, some of the comments that I heard overall were like, "I really can't make a recommendation on this because I don't have enough information," going back and forth. So, it kind of made me wonder, is everybody actually making the right decision? Are they actually thinking about the people they represent? Or are they just doing this for some other reason? So I went through, and I went through, and Frank Zavoy was at one of the meetings, he made some comments in regards to the garbage pickup, and I realized it went back and forth, and you might say, well, well, there wasn't a, we only had two quotes, and then the other quote came. But when you read the PDF that was in there, the PDF does state that the city has a right to reject any and all proposals awarded to the contract, and award the contract to the contractor who in the judgment of the city will best serve the interests of the city in selecting a contractor. The city will take into consideration fees, experience, qualifications, familiarity of the city, and the familiarity of the city's extension program. And I don't believe that we did that, because as we heard, there's 20 years of experience. We don't have a problem with anybody. And then, we're talking about basically a $3.48 difference. And we're billing out at $13 for garbage collection, so if the person is charging us now 1128 or 1146, we're billing the customer $13. So, that extra money, I mean, people have asked me, "What are you doing with that extra money if I'm being billed $13 for garbage?" So, the reason I did it mainly was, the other thing was, is if we want to work with the community, we want people to shop in Wauwaha, we want people to buy local, I think it starts here, as leaders of this community. Otherwise, you know, I don't think we can say anything to people if they don't support our community. As we heard before, and I have it on here, that the one vendor has apartments in this house, in this town, pays taxes in this town, gets fuel, they're in the community, they support the community. I guess I don't know why, and I watched and listened to everybody's decisions, and there's one council person that really hasn't said anything, but, and I guess I'd have to ask her, is Shaney, you haven't said anything, but yet you voted against it, and I have to ask, what was your reasoning for that?
Well, my reasoning was this, it wasn't how everybody else voted about the second bid in with Grations. I have no problems, I also did my homework, I went out in my community, in my ward, and I talked to people, and I had a 50/50 reaction. I didn't have like Joanna where everybody was happy with Grations. Myself, I have had some problems with Grations. When I have called, I've had some rude comments from the lady when I was trying to ask her questions, but then I've also had some good things with Gration, too. When I was looking at this, I was going by the numbers, and when I was talking with the Public Works guys that were in charge, I asked them about the money, and they told me that the extra money could be utilized for our community to do extra things. And I thought, well, that would be great, we would be saving some money with our community, and we could offer different things. Now quote me if I'm wrong, if that wasn't what I heard from somebody out of Public Works, but that's what I had heard. And not that there's anything wrong with Grations, it's wonderful that you've served our community for 20 years, but then you guys got to remember, too, we did that with our lawyer. We had a lawyer here that served us for how many years, and we changed because we needed to do something to help us out. And my feelings were, if we had extra money for our city, what could we offer that we don't have now? Could we offer leaf pickup during those fall months so that people aren't traking it, and it's not in the gutters and our sewer, or not our sewer guy, our...
Street sweeper.
Street sweepers are having issues with that all out. So honestly, when I made my decision, it wasn't that the fact that they came in with a second bid, but then I also agreed with Scott, too, if you're sitting there as a city and you're letting everybody come in with a second bid on something, how does that make us look if we're just letting everybody do that? Are we going to do that for everything that we bid out? Are we going to let them, after they find out how much lower their opponent is, are we going to let them put in another bid after the fact? So those are my decision-making. My decision on the first vote was the fact that the city would be saving some money in a couple of years, that we could offer some stuff for our community, and that's how I stayed through this whole thing. And I did agree with Scott on the whole thing. It's us as a city, too, we're representing, we can't just let anybody think that they can come back with a second bid.
I don't think that, I don't think that we can really do that, because we issue that money as garbage pickup, so I think we have to utilize that money as garbage pickup, because it does state-
Well, that's what I was told, so I didn't-
Right, because it is, it's stated on our bill, residential bills, that the community is paying $13. And I can tell you from in the past, it was 10, it was 11, and it got moved up to the 13 when we, when they did that, city containers, and they added on the extra cost to that. So then, instead of having it with a real close to 12, the committee at that time and the council changed it to 13. So that money was just ear-tagged, basically, for garbage collection.
Another thing that kind of concerned me is that, at the December meeting, it came out in the paper that it was 3-3, and the mayor broke the tie, and voted not to take Harder. So why are you even going through this here? It should have been Gration to start with. I've been in enough organizations enough years that I haven't really heard of anything like that.
And the other thing I have is that-
Other than the mayor can't say nothing, other than maybe break the tie and call a meeting order.
We're, the other thing that I took in and I got to hear is that we did spend, we've been working on this since, well, it started in the September meeting, so we've worked all the way back to that committee, that committee has gone back and forth. So, council people, your committee guys are getting paid to have that committee meeting, so we spent over, almost over $300 going back and forth on this through the committee meetings, when we're talking about $3.48.
Well, that'd be true, that was the only thing that was discussed at the meetings.
Well, right.
So, that really is not even-
Well, you had your meetings, yeah, it is, because every time you-
Those meetings are held monthly, Mike.
Right, but every-
So what you're saying is nonsensical.
What you, you shouldn't have to go in there and have, if you don't have the recommendation, then you need to get the information.
Okay, let's back this up just a little bit.
So, so basically, it's-
As long as you brought this up, let's back this up just a little bit, okay?
When I'm done, when I'm done. So, basically, we spent all these meetings and all this time for that, basically, it's about $300 a year that we're talking of saving for garbage pickup. And, like I said, so if you want to have the support of the community, and with all the people that have contacted me and said, "Don't change, we want to keep the same garbage collector that we have, and we've had it in the past." I don't know why, a lot of people don't understand that, yes, we have to do it because of the bids. And one of the things, Nick, on your October meeting, you did state that it's not the system that is not working, it's just that we have to get the quotes to do that.
Yeah, you're absolutely right, Mike.
So, the system, if the system's not broke, why do we want to fix, what do we have to fix?
Are you through?
So if you'd like to say something?
Okay, I agree with one statement, are people doing this for some other reason? I actually question that myself, as to why some people are doing this.
And one of the things, Nick, on your October meeting, you did state that it's not the, it's not the system that is not working, it's just that we have to get the quotes to do that.
Yeah, you're absolutely right, Mike.
So the system, if the system's not broke, why do we want to fix, what do we have to fix?
Are you through?
So if you'd like to say something?
Okay, I, I, I agree with one statement. Are people doing this for some other reason? I actually question that myself as to why some people are doing this. We have a policy that states we will bid out all services. This one has not been bid out in years. So we took quotes. We also put the question on our citizen survey, asking the citizens when they would like to respect cycles picked up and if they'd like containers. Through the use of that, we determined that they wanted the same service they have now, monthly recycling, same garbage pickup. We determined that they were not in favor of bids. That left us with two companies. You have one company at this price and another company that over two years is going to charge you a minimum of $11,338 more. $11,338 is not change. It's not pocket change. It might not be much to you, but I think the citizens would say $11,000 is fairly substantial amount of money for exactly the same service, which is what they requested, the same service, which is what they're going to get, the same level of service. I don't see this. I, I listen to things, I've listened to people say they have loyalty to their provider. I don't so much have a loyalty as a provider as I do the citizens of the city. It's their welfare I'm looking out for. And if I can get them the same level of service, that is what I'm going to do.
Okay, I think, anybody else have anything they would like to add?
I would just like to nutshell something. And I think this is obvious, but I don't know that it's been brought out and stated in any of these discussions. I too looked over some of the videos and agendas and stuff from past meetings and my feeling is, if you're voting for Harder, you're voting for the lower initial price take. If you're voting with Gration, it's because of his reputation of 20 years. Over the 20 years, what is his reputation with the city been? And I think that that's what you have to ask yourself. Excuse me, Nick, I'm not done. And to compare the garbage issue with the attorney issue, I believe is apples to oranges.
Well, that was like comparing a business with the garbage when the businesses have nothing to do with presidential garbage either.
Correct. But here is why I say that about, and I'm not trying to pick on you, Shani, but here is why I say, you used the Mr. Worth example and this is why I'm bringing it back around. The needs of the city in today's world has changed unfortunately, so the scope of practice of law that Mr. Worth could provide us was different. The needs of our garbage has not changed as evidenced by the citizens that have come to speak here tonight. And I'm not discrediting or discounting that you may have heard other opinions from people that I've heard. That's totally fair and valid. And I'm glad that you are, if you feel that that's really what the people are telling you and I'm not saying that it's not, I'm glad you're voting your conscience with that. So I'm very glad to hear you explain yourself. So thank you for doing that. So Nick, if you want to.
No. So.
Oh, go ahead.
I guess with my veto, unless anybody else has anything to say, I would, I would like for you guys to, I guess as Scott said in the last one, reconsider it. And I would like to reconsider that, that you would take the, take the opportunity and reconsider it at this time because of what we kind of, what we have heard here tonight and from what I have said about the majority of the things that I saw on our video. And I asked anybody in the community to go on the city's website and if they have a computer and, and look at some of our meetings that are on there. They can see anything on there. We have any committee meetings, any kind of council meetings.
If you don't mind, I'll jump in real quick on the, the procedure then. So you had, and I want to say it was, was it December 15th was that meeting? That's the meeting where the motion was made to enter into an agreement with Harders, two years, the option of the third year. That was the three to three vote, which was broken, the tie was broken by the mayor, the mayor voted against. Now that didn't automatically put you on the road to a contract with Gration. All that that was, was a vote to not go with Harders on those terms. The moment, the, the, the reason why it wasn't is because the issue was then sent back to committee for the January Public Works meeting. In between there, there was a request for reconsideration. And the request for reconsideration can happen at any point until the council next meets, which typically would have been tonight, except we had a special committee meeting or a special council meeting for the assessor quotes which are out there. And that had been scheduled for January 5th. Now legally, with the reconsideration coming in, and even if it didn't come in, the reconsideration could have been made at that meeting. Reconsideration was asking to reconsider the topic. The vote to allow reconsideration was four to two, which then allows it to be brought right back on the table. This, pretty much the same discussion from the December meeting had come up, except the question was, well, why are we reconsidering? The vote there was four to two in favor of going with Harders then. Or in favor of trying to get a contract with Harders on those terms. Then the mayor had issued the veto. And in order for the veto to stand or be overridden, there has to be a motion to override the veto. And then there has to be a two-thirds majority of the council that votes to override the veto. And what that means, because you have six here, technically you need four to pass something and four would be two-thirds then. So if you have a motion to override the veto and if there's four votes for it, it's overridden, the motion then stands to enter into an agreement with Harders for two years with the city option for a third year. And again, as we mentioned at the January 5th meeting, you do not have a contract in front of you. Now, the intent has been, and the RFP document that the mayor read off of before had listed out, it solicited quotes, and then it said that a vendor would be selected to enter into a contract or try to get a contract for. And what's going to happen is Attorney Kelly then would review a draft from Harders or Gration, either one. We have a contract with Gration, so we know what to look at right away. But you would probably expect to receive a contract in the February meetings then, no matter who you go with. Is there any question on the procedure then? Basically, it's a motion to override. If it overrides, then the motion stands. If you do not have four votes to override, then we, the only thing on the agenda is the veto. So if, if this doesn't pass, it goes back to probably committee then because you don't have garbage selection on the, excuse me, on the agenda tonight. Does that make sense?
Totally.
Okay.
I'll make the motion to override the mayor's veto.
Seconded, Mr. Worth.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to override the veto. Any other questions or comments? I will ask for a roll call.
Gunnerson?
Aye.
Edwards?
Name.
Rasmussen?
Aye.
Sorry, I can't take it faster. Appleby?
Aye.
Najowski?
Aye.
Brunner?
Name.
Four to two.
Okay, then it is vetoed. Then we will move on to number seven. Finance Committee.
On behalf of the Finance Committee, I make a motion to allow the city administrator to cash out up to two weeks of the 2014 vacation time.
I'll second it.
See, motions are made. For city administrator to cash out two weeks of his 2014 vacation time. Any questions or comments?
Well, being the first topic after the debate, real quick rundown, we talked about this in December in closed session and, and it's public knowledge now, but my wife and I had a second child coming and the question was, baby was coming early, mid-December, I would really then be off. If the baby came into 2015, I wasn't really sure at all on using, carrying the, I believe at the time, for one other employee, there was a motion made to allow a cash payment for vacation that had passed on my end. I do have two weeks left. Talking to the committee, the committee recommended to allow me to cash out up to two weeks and it had to do with how much time I was taking off for the baby. And I took two sick days and then worked at night. I mean, I marked down that I was off the two sick days and then I took a vacation day. If you'd allow that, that would be good. If not, either way.
You've heard the motion and a second. Any other questions or comments? The only comment that I will have is Finance Committee, you are looking at how, how to fix that problem?
Yes.
For our vacation problem, for payouts like this? That is on your agenda? Okay. All in favor for the city administrator to cash out his two weeks on 2014 vacation time? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.
Thank you.
On behalf of the Finance Committee, I make a motion to approve checks 31091 through 3166 totaling $160,579.33 and the monthly financial statement.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Any questions or comments on any of that financial statements? We'll have a roll call.
Edwards?
Aye.
Rasmussen?
Aye.
Brunner?
Aye.
Najowski?
Aye.
Appleby?
Aye.
Gunnerson?
Aye.
Carry with all eyes.
Thank you. All right, anything else? Scott?
No, thank you very much.
Thank you. Public Works Committee.
All right. On behalf of the Public Works Committee, I'd like to make a motion approving authorization with Cedar Corp. for Lake Shore Drive infrastructure improvements, designs, bid and construction services.
Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any questions or comments regarding Cedar Corp.'s Lake Shore Drive infrastructure improvements?
Just a quick comment. We did talk about Lake Shore Drive. This is to authorize designing, bidding and then construction management. Now what's going to happen is, I would give you co-op services in, where they have the subway, they're looking at or talking about a gas station now. I realize that they've been talking about that for a number of years and the committee had said, basically they had a concern on designing an upgrade to Lake Shore Drive and an upgrade to the utilities and what happens if the city spends the money and then nothing happens again. And the developer has been told that in his development agreement, which is 99% done, if you do not develop this, you're reimbursing the city. And, and they've agreed to that. The costs are, for designing and bidding, I had it here, it's $5,200, I believe is the lump sum cost on that. Of course, I had it bookmarked and then when you need it, that's how that works. Okay, $5,200 for design and bid and then for construction management then would be an hourly rate depending on when Cedar Corp. is here and when they have to send somebody over. It'd be between $9,800 and $11,200. There's a specific breakdown of what gets billed to the, the property owner there, Curb and Gutter Utilities, those all get directly billed to the developer. And like I said, that's, that's part of, if this doesn't go through, then the city is going to be made whole on, on the cost. So right now, the, the potential schedule is that this summer, there will be construction there. At this point, that's, that's the plan. Later in the, the meeting here, they are asking for approval for signs. But they've had it before too, so it's, you know. So we're at, any other questions?
Any other questions, comments? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion is carried.
Make a motion for approval of Fairgram Safety Program Agreement for 2015.
Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any questions or comments on the Fairgram Safety Program Agreement for 2015?
As part of our workers' comp insurance, they do offer, because we're with the League of Wisconsin Municipalities Mutual Insurance, and then our workers' comp is now covered by United Heartland. They have a lot of free resources. Basically, you could take advantage of your safety program and use their resources to manage it, administer it, well, we administer it regardless, but developing, staying on top of updates in the law. There's a thought that at some point, we may be able to get away from paying Fairgram. Right now, that's, that's the old Alpha Terra. We pay them, they stay up on all the updates, they handle all of our training, tracking, and the cost for the year is $2,075. With that, we know that everything's up to date and everything we need to keep updated is updated. This is for 2015. The discussion, we started at the committee to talk a little bit about, you know, moving forward, could we get away from Fairgram and run it on our own? Now, the trade-off would be that it would be more time on our own staff. I'm not saying that that's a determining factor, but what you pay Alpha Terra, Fairgram, you pay them basically to take care of it for you. So right now, the recommendation is to approve it for 2015 and then just know that we're looking into, can we take that in-house or how much of it can we take in-house? It's an ongoing discussion.
And one of the thoughts that we considered was just that if we go ahead with the city hall, we didn't want to put extra burden on the staff at this time, but it's definitely an option for the future, you know, once we get past this.
Okay, any other questions or comments? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried.
And I'd like to make a motion for approval of a three-year agreement with Waukega County Highway Department for snow removal service on East Anne Street, East Main Street and South Mill Street for a total annual cost of $1,900.
Okay. You heard the motion and a second. Any questions or comments?
Real comment, a quick comment. You might want to, you might ask yourself, why are we in the middle of January talking about snow removal? And it's, it's been at the Public Works Committee probably for seven, eight months, we've discussed, it started with Elfrid Street with the county. The county does roadwork, they do a lot of other things that we need. So we've talked to them about, you know, what can we do to help each other out? At the time, the discussion was on salt, maybe cooperative purchasing, we can get a better rate. And as we talked about salt, well, you talk about winter and why you need salt. And we talked about the methods that we use for snow plowing and snow removal. Right now, we know that the county comes in on X and F and 110, and they're always going to be doing those streets no matter what we do everywhere else. The other piece that we employ in our snow removal service is we contract, we actually, we don't contract, we have a approved rate listing with Fox Brothers. So basically, whenever we call them for snow removal on the city streets, we have roughly 14 miles of streets, they will come and do what we ask them to do. And then the other piece is with the city equipment that we have. We have an F-350 with a plow, we have the John Deere tractors, we do a little bit of plowing. The problem there is we haven't done a lot of our own where we can rely on our own staff and because we don't have very big, big trucks, we'll always rely on other people. Knowing that the county is always going to be in town no matter what we do, and also knowing that, quite frankly, the, the roads that the county takes care of are usually always the best-looking roads in town, we had asked, you know, is it possible to take a look at Anne Street? Because we know that the schools are there and whenever we run out, we always hit that street first because it's the heaviest traveled outside of the county roads. And so we checked with the county and we said, well, we'd be interested if you're in town, can you run down Anne Street? Can you put the plow down, maybe do a little bit of salting? And what would that effort? knowing that, quite frankly, the roads that the county takes care of are usually always the best-looking roads in town, we had asked, you know, is it possible to take a look at Anne Street? Because we know that the schools are there and whenever we run out, we always hit that street first because it's the heaviest traveled outside of the county roads. And so, we checked with the county and we said, well, we'd be interested if you're in town, can you run down Anne Street? Can you put the plow down, maybe do a little bit of salting? And what would that effort require? And the answer we had, knowing that we have 14 miles of streets that we have to take care of, and we pay roughly $60,000 a year to keep those streets cleared, roughly, and I'm estimating both of those numbers, rounding them off, we end up paying about $4,500 a mile to keep snow off the road. $4,500 of our cost. The county came back to us and said, we would be interested in picking up a couple streets, knowing that they already have a set amount of staffing and they already have certain amounts of miles that each driver has to go off of. You know, they're not looking at taking over the city at all. And I don't know that we really intended at Public Works that in the next three to five, six, seven years, we would be aiming that way. But knowing they'll be here, we just thought, well, what is your rate? And what they came back to us with was $1,000 a mile, flat rate for the whole year. And they'll come through and plow, salt, sand, whatever they do on X, F, and 110, they will also do Anne. We also had talked a little bit about all of the churches in town. You have churches on X and F, you have the Catholic Church, which is on the end of East Main, in addition to a little bit of the business downtown. We also talked about the library, the doctor's office, the funeral home being a little bit on South Mill. What we came up was three options. East Anne is roughly .6 miles, East Main is roughly .6 miles, and South Mill is roughly .7 miles. The idea would be, if the county's already a block, you know, they wouldn't go any more than maybe a block off of the regular route, and knowing that it's $1,000 a mile, quite honestly, we can't buy the salt that they would throw on the road for $1,000 a mile. Now, what it would turn into would be $1,900 for the year if you go with those three streets. We would still have 12 to 13 other miles in town that we would have to clean up or Fox Brothers. Now, the goal is, we're still calling Fox Brothers on those things. The county would not clean out downtown for us, we still have to do that yet. And again, here we are, sort of in mid-January. Usually, when we're looking at salt purchases, we want to be looking in February, March for the next winter. With an idea like this, knowing that it's, you know, middle end of January, the county is willing to do 1.9 miles, pick that up for us, $1,900 a year. Now, the one thing they did suggest is that they usually ask for like a three or a five-year contract on that. This amount is pretty minimal for what they're looking at, but, you know, if you would add a little bit of a street later, they don't want one year, they staff a certain way for you and then you take it away. But, a couple of questions. One is, is this something that you're willing to look into for the cost? And like I said, right now, we're paying $4,500 a mile and it looks a certain way and they would charge you $1,000 a mile and it looks a certain way. And then the other question would be, if you're interested in going with this, when would you like it to start? Next winter or this winter? And the county is willing to do either if you're interested in doing this. Everybody's got the map and everything in their computer, right? I mean, I've got a, I've got a quick map with a rundown, but it's basically East Anne, East Main, and South Mill, so. I did hear, I'll let you know, I did get a call, somebody had asked, are you getting out of the snow removal business, is, are you getting rid of Fox Brothers? That is not the case at all. I'll be honest with you, and I believe plow drivers in attendance, but I think there's times that we're already getting some of these streets picked up anyway. A little bit of salt thrown here or there where it's not on a county road, but it's still to our benefit, so, you know. It sounds like a pretty good deal. And that's what I, I'll be honest with you, it shocked me a little bit when the rate came in and I can straight up tell you that for the amount of salt that's there, we can't.
And this is guaranteed for every year for the three-year agreement?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And that's in writing?
Yep, that's, and you have a copy of the contract here, if you're interested in that. Now, if it's not working out, you know, I hate to say, if it's $1,900 for the whole year and you don't have to worry about it, if it's not working out, you know, I'm sure, you know, you know where to find the county, for sure. And like I said, you look at the roads that they do and if the, if the city can sort of put those out of sight, out of mind a little bit right away and then just know that they're covered, that's kind of a safeguard that you have there. I mean, it's a good thing to look into.
We have a motion in a second on this, so. Any other comments or questions? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried.
Can I ask a quick question, which?
I think we'd like it to start tomorrow morning.
Okay.
Assuming we get enough snow. It's not snowing right now. Call him.
Okay. Anything else, Public Works?
Oh, that's all I have.
Police fire an ambulance?
Um, no action for council, thank you.
Thank you. Public health and relief, ordinance?
No action for council, thank you.
Recreation?
No action for council.
Public property and purchase?
No action for council.
Okay. Plant Commission, look for a recommend, that's one we take out. Look for a recommendation or a motion for the approval of a sign permit for Otagey County Service for Gas Station Sign, contingent on the gas station being built.
I'll second that.
I need a motion or?
Oh, I'll make a motion to approve the sign permit for Otagey Co-op Services for Gas Station Signs contingent on the gas station being built.
And I will second that.
Okay. Any questions or comments on the sign for the gas station, contingent on the gas station being built?
Yes, I mean, there's a condition that's put in there, obviously, that says, like we spoke about before, if, if it doesn't happen, the approval doesn't happen either. There's going to be two signs that they're asking for. One is a regular gas price sign that's 30 feet tall. It has advertising for the subway on it too, and it would be on the northeast corner, on the corner of Lake Shore Drive and West Main. The other sign that they had asked for is a 105-foot-high sign, which back in 2011, they received a variance for. And I could tell you that we talked about this at Plant Commission, put the video online, there's my plug that I always put in, take a look at the videos online. At that meeting, they did grant, the Board of Appeals granted a variance to allow for a 105-foot-high sign that exceeds the 30-foot height minimum, or maximum, I should say, and it also exceeds the amount of sign space you can put on. I believe the maximum is 200 square feet of signage. And the Board of Appeals, and it was a very quick meeting and there aren't a lot of notes on it, so how much was considered, I'm not sure, but that variance was granted for a sign that basically allows them to put up a 105-foot-high sign. So, this permit would be for those two signs contingent on the gas station being built, which we already discussed, you know.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Next, I need a motion then to approve the certified survey map for 701 North Mill Street and 705 North Mill Street.
I saw move.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any questions or comments in regards to the certified survey map, 701 and 705 North Mill Street?
This is probably step two of three on the move of Mitchell Automotive. The Mitchell Automotive building was its own parcel. The parking lot that they're looking to use was actually parts of two parcels that real estate builders had owned. This survey map would take two of real estate builder parcels, split them so that Randy Mitchell could have enough for parking lot, and then those two pieces would be combined with Randy Mitchell's initial parcel to create one. And the two that existed for real estate builders would also be combined to one. So, where it starts with three parcels on that block and you have a map there, it would then go down to two. Now, that's step two. Step three would be next month then, the zoning and the conditional use for Mitchell's property need to be amended to allow, to cover this new part property that he's bringing in, but we knew that ahead of time though. So, we, you know, last month, we were talking about the conditional use, we already knew he's going to be building on a parking lot and he's going to have to buy it. But that's what that, this map does here, is it basically squares off Mitchell's property, 701 North Mill, and real estate builders turns into more of a squared property, 705 North Mill. Any questions?
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Move on to new business. Approved temporary Class B Retailers License for Fire and Ice for February 7th through February 16th.
I saw move.
I'll second it.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any questions or comments? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Plan number B, discussion of possible action and contribution to Fire and Ice. We turn that over to Finance. Okay. Review application, Operator's License for Emily Cris, Christmas? Crimsey? Crimsey? For Wilson's Brick House.
I saw move.
I'll second that.
Okay. Orson's been made and seconded for Operator's License at Wilson's Brick House. Any questions or comments? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. D, we're moving to next month, that's a resolution. Mayor's report? I have nothing at this time. Administrator?
Just a real quick comment.
Three minutes.
Yep, no, I'll break that even. January 5th, we talked about the assessor quotes, there was question on the city's notice of non-compliance with the respect to values on residential commercial. At that meeting, we talked about inviting the vendors to the next council meeting. In between there, we got some new information that the state may actually make a change in their valuations that might get us into compliance. We need to be within 10% of the assessed value to the fair market value. One year out of every five, you have to have everything in between 10%. Now, our residential has been 11% higher than fair market value for every year, it's been at 11%. The state is making a change to the valuations that is probably going to bring us into compliance for this year, that'll get us to 106%. The problem is, our commercial property was out of compliance last year too, and you have to get one year where you get all of them in line, and the commercial may not be into compliance, but we'll know that in February. So, when we talked about a full revaluation of the properties, knowing that in 2017, the state will come and do a revaluation for you if you're not in compliance by then, we do have this year and next year yet to do this revaluation, which means that in March, April, if you find that we're not in compliance, you can still authorize one to go forward there. But what we're probably going to have at Finance in February is, we'll have our current assessor come and explain the notices of non-compliance and get you a better idea of what the whole program is, what it does, why we might not be in compliance, why we would get into compliance. And then that way, it's less of a sales pitch and more of a, here's your assessor explaining to you where you're at. Now, after that, we do have the quotes on the assessors that we could then take up later in February or March, but that's the reason why it's not on here tonight and, was that three minutes? Or was that less than three minutes?
I should have timed you.
I was gonna say, I thought somebody, it looked like somebody might have been timing it.
It's gotta be the shortest, yeah.
Could be.
Are you still moving forward with gathering information from different vendors at Quory?
Yes, yes. Yep, yep.
Okay. We'll move on then to number 11. Police chief?
Just a quick update on December. We had 168 calls for service, 21 of those were traffic complaints, 40 additional traffic stops, probably the most noted thing that happened in December, which happens every December, with the amount of welfare checks or mental health complaints that we have. We did seven transports in December. We also had the Rise Together Group come to the high school, very well attended, all three sessions, it was very informative, very well received by everybody who was there and some of you made it. Thanks for stopping by. And the only thing I'd like to add in addition to that, before we move on, is if we could not schedule the police committee meeting tonight, and I'll get ahold of all three members because the judge, municipal court judge wants to come and I don't have her calendar.
Oh, okay, great.
It'll be in February, but we might have to move it around.
We can work on it then, Jerry.
Yeah, it'll be next couple of days.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Jerry.
Set meeting calendars for February.
We're gonna do a court session first, remember?
We would, no. No. I'll give you a quick verbal.
We'll just bypass that and say that we had it, but we will not be coming to it.
I couldn't say that for him. I'll say it for him.
All right. Right now, we have Finance scheduled for Monday, February 2nd at 6:00 PM, followed by Public Works on Monday, February 9th at 6:00 PM, and then Council on February 16th at 6:30. So, those are right now, the only ones we have set in stone. Do we need, police is going to wait, do we need ordinance?
Do we still need to wait? Shall we just kind of play it by ear?
Yeah, play it by ear, that would help.
I don't think we have any.
No, the only thing we've had was, we have been working with the fire department on the skating rink. The weather hasn't been cooperating the best on it, but we should.
Go to the fairgrounds, skate all you want.
Yeah.
If I could add something, I talked to Mr. Black about some stuff and he's willing to come if we have a rec meeting, looking into maybe opening up the middle school during the week so that people, kids can wear off some energy, because I don't know about anybody else, but I have two very high-energy kids that need more than just being outside, they need to be running and shooting hoops and everything else. So, if one gets set, he just needs to be known and he'd be attending it.
Last night, there was an open gym.
We had the high school from 6:00 to 6:30. My two were passed out by 6:30.
So, that's working for you.
Why don't you, we want to schedule one in February then? Because then that way, we could get our preliminary work done for the swim lake too.
Yeah, I was gonna say, there might be something with the pool we gotta start with.
When do we usually, it's fine, whatever.
Usually, recs are on Tuesday, but it will work, whatever you guys need.
Is that it? I could avoid Tuesdays.
Okay, avoid Tuesdays? Okay.
Well, Wednesday, the, it's the Wednesday before council.
The Wednesday? The 11th?
February 11th? Wednesday? tentative, maybe? Let's go from there.
Would you be able to email Scott and let him know this, see if it could work for him to go?
Yeah, I gotta talk to him anyway, home. Something very similar, that same thing.
Okay, do we need public property meeting?
Uh, not this month, no. We just had one, we should be good.
And plant commission?
We will probably need one in addition, now, there's a chance we may need a special council meeting next, sometime in the next week or couple of weeks, depending on the schedule for these TIF districts, on closing one, opening one. If it's possible to find a night for next week, that might be better, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, just in case.
26 to the 30th.
So, it'd be 27th, 28th, 29th, somewhere in there. And it's just in case, in case we need to have resolutions at set meetings. And if you'd rather that we play it by ear, otherwise, I mean, if you guys have a date...
Monday or Tuesday would be best for me, probably, that week. I don't know what everybody else does, go in.
I'll be third shift next week, so I can, any 6:30 meeting works for me.
Okay. Zoomer. I don't have any sleep.
Like a Tuesday or Wednesday?
Wednesday would be better for me.
Okay. And we'll know by the, in the next couple of days here for sure and whether we need it, but.
If we're gonna ask to be Tuesday, just off or run rats with me.
Bring them down.
Tap them square.
Okay, you got it, Tom?
Special, did we need a plant commission though? Because if you want... Because if you want one, normally, we had on that second Wednesday, you could do it the same then as rec.
For sure, we're going to have to have one, but when we do the zoning and conditional use, we'd have to look at that, and then we'd also look at whether we need to notice that again. And I think we do have to notice a hearing for those meetings. I mean, we've done it already, but because he's adding more property, I think we're gonna do it again. But we'll double-check on that.
Do we want to tentatively see if the other members can do it on the eleventh, then, or you just want to wait?
Yeah, maybe tentatively on the?
Tentatively?
The eleventh is what Recreation, we're thinking, too?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm, sure.
We will, I will find out with the other members, too.
And just a reminder that we said after the first year, and I don't know how the rest of you guys want to do it, but, you know, we're getting meetings and meetings, and they're extending on them out further. So, remember, we did talk about maybe having two council meetings a month and try to cut back on having meetings, you know, every night in a week, because it does tie up a lot of time for the administrator, plus, I don't know about the rest of you, it ties up, and you gotta have a meeting two, three nights in a row. It doesn't make family time very good. So, it's something to think about. Okay? Then we can move into, well.
We have, so you got a close session notice to talk about ordinances regarding the railroad. And there is no update. I mean, we can wait till the next city council meeting.
Oh, darn, we don't get to stay for another hour or so.
Yeah, it's not, yeah.
Are we winning?
Is it, is there anything different?
Okay.
Yeah, no, we, so, short, short story, we don't have to go to close session because it's, it's good.
Awesome.
Nothing's gonna happen between now and next month, so, next month will.
Ask for, I ask for a motion then to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.